Want to call to order the special call meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for July 7th, 2020. I'll call the roll. Perigin.
Here.
Beasley Brown.
Here.
Denning.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Wilkerson is here. The first item is approval amendments for two special meetings, the June 16th and June 18th, meetings on 2020. Entertaining motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning. Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes. First item is municipal order 2020-102. Municipal order approving the promotion of Jeremy Abel to the position of fire apparatus operator in fire department. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
As a result of a retirement in the fire department, Chief Colson has made a recommendation for a fire apparatus operator, a promotion, to fill that position. We had a successful round of testing last fall. Jeremy Abel was part of that testing as a firefighter. Jeremy is being recommended for the fire apparatus operator position that's being, will be coming vacant soon. Jeremy actually started with us in 2006 as a police officer. Moved over to the fire department in 2014, became an EMT in 2015, and a firefighter too in 2019. And it's done a really good job for us, so Jason is recommending him to take over the fire apparatus operator position, which is a driver. And so recommend approval for Jeremy Abel for this position. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes, motion passes unanimously. Municipal order 2020-103. Municipal order approving the promotion of Randall Cochran to the position of crew leader in the Parks and Recreation Department. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
We've been looking for a fill for this crew leader position for several months. In need to get that filled, and we went, actually had to go through two cycles of interviews. Recruitment cycles, actually, the first one, we had select, made a selection, but they turned out to be ineligible for the position. We went back around for a second cycle. Found 21 applicants and interviewed eight, and we are selecting Randall Cochran. So is a cemetery facility maintainer senior currently, and has worked at several external companies, private companies out in the field, including rentals, ceiling and striping. He's also a US Marine. Was served four years in the military with the Marines. Knows a lot of mechanics, carpentry, HVAC, and has his Class A CBL. So we are recommending Randall for this position. A crew leader position in Parks Maintenance Department. I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes. Municipal order passes unanimously. Municipal order 2020-104. Municipal order approving the reappointments of Watheta Buford and Matt Edwards to the Milwaukee and place Smalley to the Human Rights Commission. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. All of these have served at least one term on the commission, some more than one. And served well, appreciate their willingness to participate in that function of city government. Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes, that municipal order passes unanimously. Municipal order 2020-105. Municipal order approving actions of the city manager in accepting an emergency purchase for a street sweeper from Shringfellow Incorporated located in Nashville, Tennessee in the amount of $222,015. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
We have a new face with us today in the meeting. Her name is Ellie Young. Ellie is a MPA graduate student at WKU, finishing up her master's degree in public administration. Ellie's also a Bowling Green native, went to Greenwood High School, was a soccer star there, went on to play soccer at WKU, and is now finishing up her MPA program at Western. She's been shadowing me for several weeks now, since the end of May, and making her way all through the city departments, learning about the city and how we function, how we operate. And I'm going to turn this item over to Ellie to introduce and give you an overview of this item. Ellie?
Great, thank you for that introduction. So due to failure of one of the two street sweepers, and based on the manual of purchasing and policy procedures, allowing approval of emergency purchases, the Public Works Operation Division is recommending the emergency purchase of the 2018 Timco Sweeper with full warranty from Shringfellow Incorporated in the amount of $222,015. This purchase is considered an emergency as we are required by the MS4 stormwater permits to keep the streets clean and pollution that goes into the curbs on the gut, or drains on the curbs and into the gutters is included in that. The Operation Division has been using only one street sweeper for the past month, and continuing to use only one street sweeper could possibly lead to failure to complete all necessary tasks and could risk a decrease in quality of water. And we, the Public Works Division demoed four street sweepers, and they deemed the 2018 Timco Sweeper as the most reliable meets the needs for operators, and it is available immediately. And also in the FY 21 budget, there was funds allocated for the replacement of one of the two street sweepers, and this actually comes below budget in that. If you have any further questions, you can direct them towards City Manager Mizel.
Thank you Ellie. Are there any comments or questions?
What school, what high school was that, Bruce?
It wasn't Bowling Green High, Joe.
Not Bowling Green. Okay.
All right, I'll call the roll. Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes, that municipal order passes unanimously. Next is municipal order 2020-107. Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from US Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding for the mainstream voucher program under the CARES Act. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
Hey, Bruce, you missed an item.
Number five.
I did, I did. I apologize. Can we go ahead and take care of this one since I got it read out, number six?
Sure. This is a grant. This, I'm sorry, this is 2020-107, right?
Yes.
This is the grant from HUD, or actually voucher award from HUD for nine additional mainstream vouchers. These nine would be only for non-elderly people with disability between the ages of 18 and 62. We have these with equate to about $44,000. We would add those to our current existing vouchers, vouchers, bringing us to a total of 655 vouchers. But these nine would only be, would be carved out for disabled people between the ages of 18 and 62. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any comments or questions? Slim?
Jeff, is there a waiting list for these nine vouchers? Will these nine vouchers apply to the waiting list if they meet criteria? Or will these nine vouchers be used for citizens who currently may be in need but have not yet registered?
It's my understanding that we already have enough of these that qualify on the waiting list, so these nine would be pulled off the waiting list, removed, moved ahead and get those now, or as soon as we get this, these vouchers in place. So I think we would find nine on the current waiting list to fill these immediately.
And would these nine also qualify for the incentive that the city is currently offering to landlords to rent to, to the assistance program?
I would say yes, I can confirm that. I don't know why they wouldn't.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Again, this is for municipal order 2020-107. Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning. I didn't hear you, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes, municipal order passes unanimously. Now, I apologize, we got to go back to municipal order 2020-106. Municipal order authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the 2020 Kentucky Waste Tire Crumb Rubber Tire Derived Products Grant Program through the Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet in the amount of $75,400 for the purchase of shredded rubber mulch at Roland Land Park, motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
Before I hand this one off to Ellie, I'd like to go back and answer Commissioner Nash's question, and it did, I did confirm that it is yes. They would be qualified for incentives on the landlord side with those properties.
Thank you.
Going to take care of this crumb rubber tire grant. Ellie?
So the Parks and Recreation Department was awarded the full amount of $75,400. These funds will be used for the port and place surface and its transportation costs for the new all-inclusive playground at Roland Land Park. We have this surface at our outdoor gym, and it is made up of crumbled up recycled tire that is poured onto a type of glue that creates a spongy, flat mold. And the surface is all-inclusive, as any individual despite physical ability can move on it. For example, wheelchairs can easily move across the surface. The city's allocating $250,000 of funds that will go towards the installation of this project, and the grant requires a 25% match, so that 250,000 definitely exceeds that requirement. And again, if you have any questions, you can direct them towards City Manager Mizel.
Are there any comments or questions? Slim?
Yeah. Jeff, if you would, I just want to make sure that we reiterate that this is not rubber mulch, because I've gotten some calls about, you know, rubber mulch and what it means. This is actually a poured surface that would, is poured just like concrete, one large spaced. Nobody can pick it up, nobody can carry it away, nobody can put it in their pocket or their mouth.
That's, that's a good question, Commissioner Nash. I, I had that kind of in my mind at the beginning too. But this is exactly like what we did out at Preston Miller for the Outdoor Fitness Center, that we got the grants from the beverage associations. It's a hard rubber surface. It's got a little bit of bounce or cushionist to it, but it is water resistant, it will not mold. We had, originally had this at the water park back in the early 2000s in the split, in the spraying ground area, but we had to take it out because of some mold issues. Technology on this stuff is way, way beyond that now. This is smooth surface, only it's made out of recycled rubber. It's got just a little bit of cushion give to it, but it's solid as, solid as you can be to, you could roller skate on it, wheelchair across it, ride a bike across it. It's, it's not crumbled up mulch like rubber.
Thank you. I expect Joe to roller skate on it as soon as it's poured.
No wheelchair.
Any other comments? Dana?
I just wanted to thank the Parks Department for pursuing this and for creating inclusive playgrounds. I'm just so excited for all the kids who normally wouldn't be able to play on a playground, to get to play and have fun with their friends. I'm just so excited that the city is investing in this type of thing for our children, so just wanted to say thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to thank, again, Nick Cook for going after these things. Cameron had a big part in this. Cameron Levis down at Parks, the Special Pops. And they work really well together, and I'm glad we could get this 75,000 to put toward this project.
No other comments? I'll call the roll. Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning. Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes, the municipal order passes unanimously. Next is municipal order 2020-108. Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application and acceptance of grant funds from the University of Kentucky Wellness Edge Program for adaptive sports in the amount of $21,249. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
I believe this is another grant Nick and Cameron worked on together, getting it from University of Kentucky in the amount of 21,249 with no match required. We're going to put this into play for our Special Pops Division down at Parks and Rec for their adaptive sports programs for persons with disabilities. We're going to use it to purchase wheelchairs, adaptive sleds and hockey sticks, archery equipment, kayaks, paddle systems, and put this in, in to work for our special populations division. So any, any questions you might have? This is another good program that we were able to get grant money for, 21,249.
Are there any unanswered questions? I'll call the roll. Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes, that municipal order passes unanimously. Next is second reading of ordinance BG 2020-16. Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number four to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2020. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. This is second reading of the final budget amendment, is that correct, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other comments or questions?
We
Go ahead.
There's a chance, a good chance we'll have one more coming too. We found a few things. We may put a first reading on for, for the second meeting in July, so can't say this is the final one, but wish we could, but, but there's probably going to be one more small one.
Okay. Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. That second and final reading of the ordinance passes unanimously. First reading of ordinance BG 2020-17. Ordinance rezoning, attract, ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning the tract of land containing 0.2433 acres from RM2 to family residential to RS1D, single-family residential and highway business located at 816 Josephine Street, presently owned by Falcon, Gurkin, and Hill Hill C. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. This is a recommendation from planning and zoning with eight members present, seven were yes and one abstained. Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes. We'll have a second reading at the next meeting and the final reading. Next is the first reading of ordinance BG 2020, number 18. Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending chapter two, administration of the City of Bowling Green code of ordinances to not flag standards in subchapter two dash one, general provisions. Motion by Nash, second by Wilkerson, Slim, I think you're up.
All right, thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I think the commission is aware why I put this on the agenda. I feel pretty confident that the public is as well. It started because the flags were lowered from some city buildings on June the 19th. There are two intentions of this particular ordinance. One is to ensure that the lowering of the flag does not ever occur again unless the entire commission is involved in that decision, or unless someone is following the orders of the governor or the president of the United States. The, the second intent is to find out exactly what happened related to the flag being lowered. Mayor, you put out a statement on the 19th that said, regarding recent information received about outside groups coming to our area today, it seemed prudent to protect our American flags by placing them in safekeeping for a brief period of time. I'm curious, and I know many others are, because they've come up and, and asked me, this has probably generated as much contact with the public as I've had in 2020. And it's, what was the information? Who was the information from? Who received the information? Who was that information shared with, and ultimately, why was it not shared with the Board of Commissioners before a decision was made?
Okay, I'm writing them down here.
What was the information? Who from? Who originally received it? Who shared it after it was originally received? And why was it not shared with the Board of Commissioners?
Let me get that information together and make sure that I don't misspeak, and I'll get that back to you.
You're, you're not prepared today to answer those questions?
I want to make sure that I prepare the proper response so that I don't violate any provisions within that information.
Okay. Can you share what provisions that you might be speaking of?
I'll, I'll prepare some information for you.
You, you you won't tell us now what provision you're talking about that you're worried about violating?
I will prepare some information for you with response to your questions.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
If if you don't mind emailing to me again to make sure that I get exactly what it is that you're asking.
Sure. I'll be happy to do that. I would just like to end before it's called for a vote or or if others want to speak, that that I believe that flags are powerful symbols. Uh they represent our United States flag represents our highest and most noble aspirations. Our flag reminds us that when we reach for our most noble aspirations, we are at our best. And and we can even, our flag even represents that we can heal from our own self inflicted wounds when we are at our worst. No other flag has been carried into more countries by more fo- forces dedicated not to conquest but to liberation. No other flag has draped the caskets of those who have given selfless dedication uh to their fellow country person and to the freedom of all persons. No other flag has welcomed more weary immigrants from all corners of the earth. And no other flag stands on the moon. Our flag is a symbol of a people humble enough to admit when we have been wrong. And still take pride in our ceaseless striving to be right. I believe uh that when we are living our lives every day, small things, big things. It is a a something we shouldn't take for granted that our flag is flying above us. Uh and and encouraging us to strive to meet our highest expectations. I yield the floor.
Think there's any other comments? Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, sorry, I got a fly in my face here. Uh I have a question for our city attorney. Uh just so understanding the context of this flag ordinance. Um would you mind sort of giving me a little bit of an overview of our form of government? The city manager form of government and the role of the mayor and the city commissioners in relation to the city manager? Just so I understand um you know the why we need this in particular based on how we regularly just delegate? How decisions like this are made in general?
Uh I'll start out and then uh I'll let um Hillary jump in here too. If I scare you are, I've tried to have trouble finding you. Um Bowling Green has been a city manager of former government since what like nineteen sixty eight. Um it differs from strong mayor former governments like most of the big cities that everybody's aware of in Chicago, New York with a mayor. Um you know, hires fires runs pretty much runs with the city with council approval, of course. Uh but in the city manager form of government, uh under Kentucky law, uh we elect five members of the board of commissioners. Uh those five members basically are equal. Uh we do have one of the members, of course, is the mayor. Uh on the city manager form of government, the mayor runs meetings, resides at the meetings. Uh during times of disasters and martial law, mayors do have more authority granted to them by the governor and by the statutes uh to act as the voice for the city during that time. Uh but during normal times, the um uh mayor is just like one of the five uh members of the board of commissioners. All legislative and executive functions are held by the full board of commissioners. Uh administrative decisions are made by city manager. Uh the board will will hire a city manager uh to operate the city on a day to day basis. It's a city manager uh that makes administrative decisions uh and operates the departments. Uh the city manager will recommend uh employment, uh will recommend policy changes, will recommend uh disciplinary issues. Uh but all of those things require approval from the um uh the board of commissioners. You know, we have adopted some policies, delegating some things down to city manager. You know, for example, purchases under fifty thousand dollars the city manager can do. Um but most of the city manager's authority is set by statute or set by whatever the board of commissioners authorizes the city manager to do. Um but generally, I think to answer the question of city manager form of government, it's a five member board. Uh all members have um have equal authority. Um mayor does not have, in our form of government, veto power or anything else like that. You know, unlike some of the other cities, the our mayor does not hire and fire. All that stuff is done by the uh by the board of commissioners. Uh Hillary, anything you want to jump in and add?
I don't I don't think so, Gina. I think you covered it.
Did I answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just had a little question. All right, I don't know if that's my microphone making that weird noise I noise. I apologize if it is. Um so all executive and legislative authority is with the full board of commissioners. And one of us, including the mayor, cannot act in an executive or legislative fashion without the full board of commissioners' participation. Is that correct?
Well, all all executive and legislative functions reside in a full board.
Okay. Um and in our form of government, there's the city manager. But if we had a different form of government, like a city council form of government, is there a city manager in that form of government? Or does the mayor act as the city manager in those forms of government?
Yeah, I'd I hate to talk in the cities I'm off me with. I think some of the um larger mayor uh council or mayor commission forms of government, some of those smaller cities still hire. I don't think most time and and Katie and Jeff can jump in on this one. I don't think they hire city managers, but they do hire, some of these cities do have city administrators. They had a very similar position uh to the city manager, but it still deviates because even in those cities, uh either the mayor or the commission or combination to have the legislative and executive authority. Uh but the administrator, the city administrator uh is more an assistant, I think, to the mayor. Uh in some of those form of governments or to the commission uh than anything else. So they will, they may have a city administrator that performs some of the same functions. Uh but in those cities, executive and and legislative authority rests somewhere else. Katie?
Thank you. Wanted to we've chosen.
Can you, hold on just a minute, Dana. Ashley, can you mute everybody except the talker? I don't know where that background is coming from. Thank you.
Okay. Uh so right now, we have a city manager form of government where the executive and legislative power is with the full board of commissioners. If we wanted to change our form of government to a mayor council form of government, how does a city do that? If they if we didn't feel like this form of government where all five members have equal power works anymore? What's the process of choosing a different form of government where maybe the mayor has more power than they do now?
Uh the end was all requiring election. I'd have to go back and look at statutes to see how you go about taking the steps to call for the elected election. Uh but it would require an election here in the City of Bowling Green to do that, to change our form.
So it would go on the ballot most likely for the people that choose a different form of government?
Yes, just like this one did in sixty six or sixty seven or whenever that date was.
Okay.
Even I'm I've been here a long time. I ain't been here that long.
Uh well, thank you. I really appreciate you giving me that background information. Um this situation that occurred with the flag um was it very difficult and upsetting for multiple reasons? Um one um is that it it does seem to me to that we are operating in a different form of government that than the citizens have asked us to operate under. And I feel like it's really important that as long as we are a city manager form of government, that we abide by those um procedures. Um and so I've reached out to a lot of, I'm new at this, is my first term. So I've asked a lot of other city commissioners who serve in other um cities with a city manager form of government. I've reached out to other police chiefs to understand um is there um is it common that a mayor and a city manager form of government receive information separate from the board of commissioners? Trying to understand um you know, a broader context with people who are not um you know, maybe biased on one side or the other about how we handled the situation on on June nineteenth. And um overwhelming me overwhelmingly, I got uh the same sort of response either from police chiefs uh and city commissioners or mayors who are serving in city manager forms of government. That they um would not have handled it that way or their city manager, their their city would not have handled it this way. Uh for the city managers, part of it, what I was hearing over and over again in other cities that have this form of government, that it um was it a central function of the board of commissioners for all of them to receive information about what's going on in the city, for them to be able to do the job that they were elected to do for the citizens? Um and I even had one commissioner tell me that even under the worst uh city managers that they had served with, um they at least uh had got the uh making sure all commissioners are well informed about issues as just an essential function of that job in order for the city to to really be able to do the work that it does under that form of government. Um and then in talking with the police chiefs, uh just understanding that in terms of the other other city manager forms of government and how they function in our form of government, if there is a sensitive information like what uh was given on June nineteenth. Um what I'm hearing that the way other cities have handled it is that it's either only um a decision that the city manager and the police chief um they make decisions about. Or if it's bigger than what the city manager or police chief um want to handle within the staff, then the full board of commissioners is brought in to um the discussion and given the information equally. And um I think it would be really important that moving forward, um that we really do make uh important steps towards making sure that we are um doing our business uh with a city manager form of government um type of structure and um and that we we really do operate under that unless we decide we don't want to do that. But until we have, until we no longer have this form of government, I really feel like it's important to um make sure that the full board is given the same information and that we are um empowered to do the work that the citizens have elected us to do. And uh I I hope that what happened on June nineteenth um will help us sort of fine tune our processes in terms of making sure that we are doing that. Um one of the other things I learned and and um as I was trying to understand what happened and why um is that under this form of government, uh it's not uncommon and it's just human nature that um it's usual for a mayor in this form of government to want to have more power than they do. And that that's just part of it because it's very, it's different than a mayor council form of government. And so it's strange that a mayor wouldn't have more power than the other commissioners. Um and so I think, you know, w- w- beyond this sort of incident, I think trying to figure out how do we make sure that if this happens again, whether we have our current mayor or another mayor in the future? Just figuring out how do we empower Jeff, the city manager, to be able to um uphold our current city manager form of government? Um and so that that, you know, they can give us all the equal information and not feel um any sort of pressure to to give um the mayor at that time more power than they do. Um but anyway, I hope we we can have uh learn some lessons from this situation and move forward and be a healthier, more transparent um board of commissioners and that all of us can work together um in a positive way to to ensure that all the voices are heard and that the those of us who are elected to serve are are equipped and empowered to do that. Um because as someone who is going to be held accountable for the decisions that the city makes, uh I really do think it's important that I'm at least um empowered with information uh to be able to make those decisions and given the opportunity to do so. Um but that's um all I'd have to say right now. And um I think probably, hopefully, when we get the answers back from the mayor uh for our next reading, we can continue this conversation about the specifics around what happened in regards to the flag.
Are there any other questions? I'll call the roll. Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? I think we muted everybody, Joe, when the background noise was going on.
Am I up now?
You're good. I said a yes.
Sir.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. First reading of the ordinance. Had five affirmative votes. Next reading and final reading will be at our next meeting, uh which is currently scheduled for the twenty first. Nothing else on the agenda, so we'll adjourn the meeting.